All right, we will call this meeting to order. This is the regularly scheduled BET meeting for Tuesday, September ninth. The whole public side. All offices are represented. Notice the meeting was probably posted on September eighth, twenty twenty five. Then there was one discussion possible action regarding the minutes of September second. All right.
Hey, on the minutes, just a quick question. John. Are you? We're doing the budget and cash transfer of five fifty six, eight forty eight. Was that? Am I remembering correctly that that's the three point six percent?
Yes. Well, the. I did bring my paperwork with me from last time, but what we did is we did the employer premiums from my recollection, and I didn't have them out at this time. I can go get it real quick.
What number is that, Joe?
Joe, that's the general fund share.
Yeah.
Eight, that's the general.
Okay, all right, I just want to make sure.
But that was on the three forty six, not the three thousand.
Employees, thirty four sixty, employers.
Yeah, and Joe's referencing the employer that five hundred and fifty thousand ish.
Right, it was like a hundred and thirty seven thousand in special revs.
Yeah.
Sixty six employees and then the five forty six.
Yeah, they got us eight oh six.
Yeah, and that's based on the three point six percent. Okay, all right. All right, do we have a motion on minutes? Oh.
Second.
You got a motion and a second to approve the minutes of September second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? As have it. Item two, discussion possible action regarding an update on employee benefits.
Now, if you looked at the agenda, the wrong report was attached. So I'm just going to patch out, pass out the right report. This is the same report I did last week. I'm just going to update you on one thing on the report. This goes for the next of August. Just kind of a little more clarification where we are on medical.
Without objection, the chair will request the clerk's office to make this up from the part of the record. You have one. Sucks for you.
Hey, just real quick as a reminder, you know, medical was up and I just wanted to dive into it real quick. You know, why it was up, little factors behind that. If you remember back to July first last year, that's when you and Mark took over, started paying claims and that started slowly ramping up in July and then to August and September. So their check registers weren't that large until you start paying claims. So that's really when we were bumping up against July and August on this report. That's why at least a part of that difference right there. In March, check registers in November started getting bigger.
On one side, please. We're having some.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, so just reasoning behind that again is QMR started last July. So we're bumping up against claims they paid. They started slowly in July, started getting bigger. November, we started getting bigger claim registers. That's part of the reason for that increase. The other reason is about four hundred a thousand, that makes up about four people's claims. So just one time claims. So there's kind of two reasons behind that increase. We're doing way good net wise, but I expect that to even out over this fiscal year.
Well, I mean, maybe so, but we're also four weeks ahead on claims, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, if you take those, that's about four hundred thousand. I mean, it seems like we're almost under. Am I not reading that right? So last week, or last year at this time, we had six weeks of claims paid. This week, we're ten.
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
If you compare Apple fat, we're probably actually negative on that as well.
Yeah, we've taken more recent claims and they're bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's really all I have, same report as last week.
Got it. All right, any questions? If not, do we have a motion on this item?
So what?
We got a motion to receive the update.
Second.
Sheriff's Office and the second from District Two. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As have it. All right, item three, discussion possible action regarding any items currently on the BET watch list.
Like to discuss the four hundred and twenty five thousand for the court clerk to for furniture. We need to get that funded as soon as possible according to Mr. Warren, who relates to the refinish five December. And we need to get the furniture ordered and blinds, I believe. We need to get that order done on the way. Great.
Was there, remember, it, we did have ARPA on there. Are we using any ARPA dollars for this?
Can use some ARPA for furniture, not for blinds. Furniture would be limited to those areas where there, there wasn't enough social distancing or the, where the design of the furniture prevented them from having the social distancing. It wouldn't be for individual offices and stuff like that.
The furniture that we have now currently is approximately thirty years old. Most of the furniture will not fit in the space that is being created, the furniture that we have. So we've, we've done an estimate with the furniture and that, that's, that's how much it's going to be for the, for the whole fifth floor.
I remember on this watch list in parentheses at one time I did have ARPA. And then I thought we came back and decided that.
On the, if I, if I was reading the minutes correctly, I think it was, there was a vote to take that from one time funds.
Because I remember I changed that notation.
The last meeting.
I think what we were doing here was just delineating if it were funded from general fund reserve. It would be out of one time monies, it's not an ongoing expense. It wasn't necessarily a, if money's needed, it will be from reserve and one time money. It was just for our tracking purposes, being able to see which pot we come out of in our reserve. Is that everybody else's?
That's correct, because I, I was talking to Rick across the table about his ability to minimize change orders. The group will recall since we did learn that our funds could be used to purchase some furnishings. And then we could consider the balance. So.
Do we know what the, what the amount that ARPA could absorb of that four twenty five?
Jennifer, you would have a breakdown of furniture versus blinds.
I believe the blinds is thirty eight thousand.
Thirty eight, you said?
Thirty eight thousand, yes.
Based on what you know about the project, Paul or Joe or Randy or whoever. Is the rest of that ARPA eligible? Or are you saying that?
Blinds are not, so the whole purpose of the project was social distancing.
Okay.
So now that the new construction, the design was approved and everything, any furniture that doesn't fit would qualify. And any furniture that is required to meet a social distancing distance, if you will, those would qualify.
Would it be fair to assume that any furniture that's thirty years old and may be in not the most secure condition any longer and may not be?
Yes, but.
You know, adequate to move would also probably be up. I would think that's probably, would probably encompass all of the furniture.
So can we get most of it out of ARPA and not general fund?
Where, where are the ARPA dollars?
Do you know?
That I'm asking.
Yeah. We, I know they had a change order. We were doing some electric, additional electric work that I think, because something, some walls moved or something. Was it on the south side, was it walls? Or terminals, cell service terminals, I think it was.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Did, do you know where we're, we're tracking on the use of the change order money that was set aside?
That's a Stacy thing, I haven't had much to do with that.
Was it somewhere around forty some thousand?
The change order?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it was around, I was thinking forty one, yeah.
If you'll let me, I'm checking just here. When we're talking about general fund reserve, we've got so many projects.
Do you mind saying that to the?
Premium.
Please. The, the issue is being able to hear what?
I get it.
What you're saying, so if we need to go back and refresh our recollection on what you told us?
Kerry was just talking about using some, some of money out of general fund reserve to buy furniture with. We have so many projects taking place here that require additional sums of money. One just yesterday that we haven't identified how much will cost, the effort will cost, how long it will take and what repercussions would be created. That's happening on every front, every front. And so when you talk about how to spend money and get what you need, thirty year old furniture, I understand that need. But from our perspective, trying to support projects that continue to expand, please keep that in consideration here.
I don't know if any other ARPA dollars are being pulled back other than the million that just came from benefits that was split three ways between the commissioners. We still have the one point five around Department of Mental Health, but who knows if we're going to get that.
What is there, have the, not to put you guys on the spot, that have the commissioners already allocated their thirds? District one has?
Some of them have.
Okay. Because I was wondering if we could front fund this out of those and then when DMH money is reimbursed, if, if it's reimbursed. Not when.
They have ignored our latest request, you know, keep in mind that we sent over a, a letter to them requesting them to return seven hundred and fifty thousand immediately.
Whoa.
Within twenty days. They have not replied to that request. They haven't provided documentation as of yet regarding the use of ARPA funds, if any. They are being very difficult, to put it nicely.
Who, who's this?
The Department of Mental Health.
I wouldn't bank on that.
Ever coming back?
Well, I mean, for the sake of, you know, moving, shuffling some money around to support what's needed at this point.
Yeah, I mean, District Three's has not been reallocated just yet. But hypothetically, if we were to get three hundred and thirty three towards that, there's no guarantee that we get it back.
So if my math is correct, we've got three hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars of the four twenty five that is related to furniture on this project that is potentially ARPA eligible. We just need to determine if there are.
We need to know how many funds, what funds are available and change order money that may not be utilized that we could apply. And then like, you know, I, I had said to Rick, I, I would be supportive of making up the balance out of the one time funds.
You know how long it would take you guys to do an analysis of the funds that would potentially be available? So we can back into the amount that we would need to be looking at from the one time funds.
Stacy, we're here, we might sum up these. What is your drop dead date on ordering?
I'm going to say ten weeks out. And that's, yeah.
When you tell them, probably when you need it?
When we need it, yes, when, yes, when it move in date.
And how long have they said it would take to provide that?
We need to be, we need to order it ten weeks before.
Ten.
Or what are they estimating right now?
Mr. Warren, it's December.
Keith, what is, what's the project looking like from your standpoint as far as when the fifth floor will be ready to be occupied by the court clerk's office?
Of course, the deadline.
I was thinking that Bill is saying the floor wouldn't be completed in January.
A bit late. My guess is mid year next year, certainly ahead of the twenty twenty six deadline. If there are any additional change orders.
So I, I think we've this isn't a financial piece, but from the aspect of being able to store the stuff once it's received and everything. I mean, some places where you order from, they might have a local warehouse where it could sit or whatever. But I, I think timing is going to be crucial. We don't want to be too late in our window so that you don't have stuff when you're ready to move in. But it may be problematic if too early as well, so.
Again, I've got to ask the obvious question, how do we have a six month disparity in timeline?
Yeah.
That's just a guess on my part, again, I have. But judging from what I see up there, if there aren't any other change orders, I would expect them to accelerate. They're down to manageable problems at this point. We can certainly call and ask our others representative, he might have a better view.
I think Keith is doing good.
That's his number.
Go ahead. I'm in a BET meeting and I'm going to put you on speakerphone to help answer some timing questions regarding the fifth floor. I'll take him to the podium. Question has to do with timing and completion, occup, occupation of the fifth floor.
Okay, and where we're at contractually, I believe it's March twenty sixth, I don't have my notes in front of me. The reality is that their current site condition, and I don't know if you've been up there, I think the ceiling grits in, they, they progress exceedingly well, and I anticipate a January completion.
And will we be ready to put furnishings in the space at that time?
Yes, and I think, I think we could. You know, in my opinion, yes, the question is, will we, if it wasn't finished, could we store them there? Absolutely, because it'll be very close. And I think we can confirm this with Kadel on Thursday morning, but that's, that is my opinion as I see it right now.
Do we have any other possible delays that would push that January timeline back?
Um, you know, I never say never, but currently they have the materials, the last change order for the public space area, women impact occupancy, but it, I mean, those should be, all that material should be here in late November. So I, I mean, that's really the last thing.
Operationally, the communications portion of this does not fall to Kadel, but to our own in-house communications crew?
Correct, and the components and the reception, you know, the boxes are there. I'm not opposed to beginning that and we can coordinate with Kadel to allow early completion and early termination of that, those items.
If the communications crew couldn't handle this to meet that timeline, what would a change order cost to have Kadel complete the work to meet this January timeline?
Do you have the wire and, and materials available?
We, we've ordered that, we, we've ordered that. What I'm trying to get at is, is whether or not we would suffer a, a month or two or whatever.
Okay, well, I, I think we've got another.
Okay, no, 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 wait, Bill?
Yeah.
Hey, it's Joe Bop. Can you tell me right now of the, the money that we had set aside on this project for change orders? With the last change order that was approved, how much of that money is still left approximately?
They, now, there's two answers to that, Joe. We set aside more than ten percent of the, of the contract back.
Okay.
I believe there is three, three percent approximately of the contract left, but I haven't read the numbers and I don't have them in front of me. I'm out of the field of care right now. But I believe that to be true. There is in excess of ten percent significantly that went across on Kadel's G O.
Hey, hey, Bill, this Cody, what would, do you recall approximately what that contract value was?
Man, I want to say around three eight to start with. And maybe, I think we had like four hundred thousand contingency and then I think Stacy may have added another couple hundred thousand to it approximately. Let me, you know, I might be able to look that up on my phone, let me see if I can.
And our, Bill, are they far enough along in this project that you're pretty comfortable that potential contingencies that would have been unknown have already surfaced? Or are you still concerned that there may be other items out there?
I, I really don't think so. Now, there's unknowns is over with. Additional requested work may be different. We have the last two scope changes for, for enhancements to the project. So if you're asking me, if, if there's unknowns, I, it is, yes, it is very small chance, there's always some chances of that. But as long as we don't increase the scope at the request of the end user or Mr. Warren or K or IP, I don't think there's that much left.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
All right.
Thanks, Bill. So then it seems like, I mean, pending verification of numbers, there may be sufficient or at least close to sufficient numbers, dollars available in that contract, assuming that there's not, you know, other modifications that you guys want to do on the project. But I mean, this would be kind of a modification, you know, for the furniture stuff, so.
Could both funded, fully funded one time reserves and then if we get any of the one point five back from mental health?
Make that pull again. But if the money's available in the project, it's ARPA dollars that are limited on what you can spend it on, why would we not use it first? Because we're unlimited kind of on what we can use reserve dollars for, so.
Well, I wonder if we can take the time since it sounds like it may be January rather than December to really get some solid numbers.
Yeah, is there a deadline on your pricing for your furniture? Do you know when that deadline is?
I do not, I'm sorry.
Okay, so how about we do this, go ahead and check on that. And if, if that deadline is coming up approaching very quickly, let me know and I'll give a Cassie about scheduling a special meeting between now and Budget Board in a week and a half. And we can always have that conversation, we can come back, if it's, if it's needed. If it's, if it's not a, you're going to lose your pricing and it sounds like our ten week window, we're, we're fine there. And if we're not going to potentially suffer an increase in pricing because we don't order by X date, then we could potentially revisit this at the October regular meeting.
And as part of this, Cody, we shouldn't assume that all hundred to hundred and fifty, whatever that money is available for ARPA can be applied because there are certain contingencies that fall into it. And I'm not familiar with what those would be, so we need to loop in a center and make them part of this conversation as well. That'll help further refine that number, so.
I would, I would anticipate that ARPA monies would not be able to all, be able to fund the whole, the whole thing.
Yeah, so loop in a center and, and further refine that.
We would also be pretty good stewards and if, if anytime we don't spend, it would go back to the county.
And I know you guys are taking donations on furniture as well, so it's not like we're completely.
My other question.
Brand new furniture.
I don't see, Jessica, my other question is, when we were talking about the county capital the other day, she was consolidating a lot of the older projects that had funds left in them that it was no longer going to be needed. She's going to roll that into the, the, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the court fund maintenance portion of the M O U. It sounded like there may have been substantially more money than the two fifty that was going to be shuffled around as well. That money's already there in the county capital. It may be that if we need the thirty, thirty eight thousand dollars for blinds, the money may be in that capital account right now to be able to utilize there. And once there's an assessment done on the, on this particular project, what contingency dollars are remaining and figure out what you're short, that money may be in county capital as well. It may not be, but do you have a problem if we push this from today? And if this afternoon, you're like, okay, because we can't really do anything unless we call a special budget board meeting. We can't do anything until budget board next Thursday anyway. If we made your recommendation today, it wouldn't matter until budget board meets next Thursday. So we can always, if you go back and figure out your, your timing on your pricing and that kind of stuff, if we need absolutely have that recommendation on budget board this month, we can still call a special meeting and come back. Budget board, we have plenty of time. Are you comfortable with that?
I would be more comfortable if we partially funded it with at least the, for the blinds and thirty-eight thousand for the blinds and some for furniture.
But there may be money in another account that we can.
I understand. If that's, if that's what we decide to do, then we can, we can, wait, I can come back with, with timeline, yeah.
Cody, Joe, Paul, Brandy, can one of you guys liaise with Jessica and find out the status of that county capital account and what money's been, have been moved around and what's available for that two hundred and fifty thousand has been um. I mean, it won't have been moved to that other line item yet because I'll have to have a budget board. But assuming that that's approved to move there, what, what remaining, which is that. All right, is there anything else on this particular portion of the item? If there's nothing else, is there any other item on here than anybody's discussed this time? We can always come back to it later in the meeting if we need.
We need to fund the courtroom clerk, that sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty, that is nine months of salary. Then it would annualize a new employee for the courtroom clerk. And this is required for a new judge who's beginning September fifteenth. But I believe that, that amount, this is from October first for, for the rest of the year.
How many have to use your hub right now?
I'm sorry?
No, how many total have to use do you have right now?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Are you all fully staffed?
I'm gonna say, I believe yes.
It's the second most behind you.
Is there any way, can you get that information for us?
Which one?
What he has.
The F T Es if we're fully funded.
Well, if you're fully staffed.
We're fully staffed.
Yeah.
I, I can get that information, yes.
When, when does this judge, you said September fifteen?
Yes, the judge um start date is September fifteenth, and we are required to provide a clerk for that judge. Which would be an additional employee from what our current police department.
Have you hired them yet?
No, whenever we send somebody over for a clerk, they most likely come from in-house, but then we would have to replace.
Backfill the positions.
Is it a situation to where if you're not, I don't know what the situation is on, you know, your vacancies or whatever, but if you are not fully staffed, if you have vacancies, is it something that you could go ahead and hire the position and have the individual, and then if you wind up filling those vacancies later in the year? We do this with, with different departments. I was gonna say all the time, I mean, it's not all the time, but usually when a situation like this occurs, we've done this to where we can track it and look towards the end of the fiscal year. And if there's a um, a deficient, a potential deficiency that's gotta be there, then we can look at, at funding that out of reserve later in the fiscal year.
What I do know is that whenever we put the budget together, it was pretty tight. Uh, whenever we were putting our budget together, so there's not a whole lot of wiggle room um there, so we would.
No, I, I get that, I get that, but it's but if it's, if it's tight or fully staffed, but if you're not fully staffed. And, and I think that's why Brandon was asking, are you fully staffed or all of those positions in there? But if there's vacancies, even though it's tight, it's tight if you're fully staffed.
Yeah, I don't believe there's any vacancies right now, that's what. I don't have those numbers on paper in front of me, no. We're, we're fully staffed. And so we need to funding for, to add a new employee.
Yeah, that, that's really where I've kind of called the questions, you know, another large part of my job. Staff turn, and when it takes two or three months for somebody on, we essentially banked that for eight, ten, a hundred and thousands of dollars, we didn't pay that salary for two or three months. And so what I'm saying is that generally in that case, we would, you know, so we've, we've got a certain amount for example. We will use all that, it's just a little bit. And so even if we stay fully staffed through the year, just when your staff turn alone, you've got a sixty-day old one that, she always does that comes along with it. And so, and then within the year come April, we always lapse back in our salaries for, that's why I want to know what your F T Es and your bunch of staff. Sure, ten people that nearly pays for it one month of savings, you know?
I understand. So is, do I need to make a motion? I, we really do need to get this funded for the new employee.
Do you want to tackle this before we tackle the potential COLA salary adjustments across the board for general fund?
If you, if you want to wait until we get to tackle that, that would be okay. But I'm, I'm not sure if whatever we go on the COLA or anything like that, it's gonna, we, we still need to be funded for a new employee. And to have that annualized, yeah.
You want to annualize it right now, so you don't want to do sixty-two, two fifty, or?
No, we need to do the sixty-two, two fifty, which is nine months for this year, and then annualize a new employee for going forward. Annual three, I believe, yes.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to make a motion, you're perfectly welcome to. I just was asking the question, I didn't know if you were wanting to just use this piece to give information and then come back for a um, for a motion, if, if you want to make a motion, you can do it now or, or later, it's your call.
Well, yeah, you can go ahead and do it now, make a motion to go ahead and fund the sixty-two, two fifty for courtroom clerk for nine-month salary.
Okay, we got a motion to transfer from general fund reserve to the courtroom clerk's general fund budget, uh, an amount of sixty-two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to fund nine months salary and benefits for a courtroom clerk. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we can have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, uh, call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose? All right.
I'm gonna be noted just until we figure out what the. I just, because I'm, we're just so tight. I, I just want to make sure that we have enough that we can change the, the calls in the go-through.
Just to confirm, Brandon holds slightly.
Not, not because we get, I just want to make sure we get a call in the first, because like our fifty-five, we need that, I'm not gonna push over the employees.
Ayes have it? Anything else on the watch list? All right, let's move down to item four, discussion possible action regarding procedures and timing. A general fund revenue supplement for twenty-five, twenty-six. I don't think we really need anything on that today. Um, item five, discussion possible action regarding the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Here from the trust to speak.
This isn't what we originally had, and you just put that on to have it?
Uh, this is their signed version, I did receive it, I did ask for it from my hands. Video is attached for you all.
So I will just let everybody know, I got an email yesterday uh from somebody at the jail trust asking uh me what they need to be prepared for, and my basically my answer was, all I could answer on that would be questions that I might have, but, I mean, I don't really even know everything that I have based upon the other questions and, and what the answers may, you know, be from them, it may, you know, come up with other questions from me, but I can't speak to the rest of the group. So my recommendation is to go back and watch the B E T meeting from the last time that they were here and made their presentation, and look at some of the questions and the concerns that we had, and be prepared with that. And I said beyond that, I would just suggest have a um good understanding of your budget, both from the macro and micro level, and be ready for conversation. So I was assuming they would be here, but.
I did have to see.
One thing I noticed on their budget is, looks like at the bottom, there's a six, at the very bottom of that sheet, it's a six-point-two million-dollar increase, but we've only got five point. I don't know, I'm just talking to you.
I guess at the very bottom, yeah, the budget, the budget sheet, keep going. Was the.
Six point two was their ask.
The five point eight came from what they said they were going to be short.
Okay. Yeah, okay, yeah, right there, so it's, they've got listed as a six-point-two-five difference, but on the watch list, they've got five point eight-two-two, so we're short, a little bit of money there somehow. So what, what, you said that the five point eight was what they'd be short?
What they said they would be short.
So the budget, I would, it would reflect.
You'd think so.
I would. I just think those numbers would jive, that's the case.
When they first presented their estimate needs, like if you go down a little further, uh, you're looking at the six point two. I think they were really, when they first presented it, they were asking for eight point two. Yes, and then you know, that all, that all happened in June or whatever, when that first released, and that's what the five point eight.
Yeah, so they told us they needed eight point two when they were asking for money. And then they said that we're gonna be five point eight short if we don't get any more money. So I don't know where they came up with the additional two and a half million dollars. You know, evidently they came up with two and a half million dollars between when they made this presentation to us and said that they were gonna shut the doors on this one, but regardless of what was, this is what was presented. Cassie had asked me, um, we put this agenda item on because it was requested before, and they weren't here last time. So we just put it back on there, and Cassie had, had a good suggestion about including their estimate of needs on here so that if anybody had any questions, it was, it was here, I appreciate that, so. Regardless of that number, we don't have eight point two million dollars for or five point eight, or five point eight, regardless of that. And would it, does anybody have any updated numbers on what they rolled over, what they la, lapsed this past year?
Number at the top of their sheet, correct?
Did they say, did they mention that they used to carry over? Well, they use, yeah, I mean, they're carryover from previous year. So the carryover from previous years there, that's two point five oh nine million. But leading up to the budget discussions for last fiscal year on the current one, we were told, we're not gonna have anything lapsed, we're, I mean, we have nothing left. We need more money, and they lapsed two and a half million dollars. They've lapsed significant amount of dollars every single year. I just, I don't know what they, they carry over was for this last year.
Well, and the problem is, I, I don't really know which numbers were right, because on the top of that sheet at the revenues page, it shows they carried over negative nearly a third of a million dollars, if I read that right. At the, at the top. Yeah, it looks like they, on there, it looks like they.
They're short three hundred and thirty-three. Yeah, they're, they're showing that they were in the hole three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for this year, but my question was, does anybody know if that is accurate or if there was a lapse? Because like I said, the year before, we were being told that it was negative two point five million, or it was it was nothing, that they weren't gonna have any lapses, and that being a positive. But I mean, I guess I guess they do not want to be part of the September session, so we've we've told them about our meetings, they're completely aware of them, there's been communication back and forth both before this meeting and before the previous one. So my last two meetings with them individually, they're not showing. They know showed you on scheduled meetings? No action necessary. No action on item five. Item six, discussion possible action regarding the supplemental appropriation, meaning the Oklahoma County General Fund budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. Really, was there an issue with the attachment last time?
On the draft, the one that is attached, so the final act is correct.
All right, so we took action last time, is, is there anything that we need to take action on, on this one, to clear up anything?
Yeah, it would be an hour.
Okay, all right. I had asked Cassie to leave most of the items from our last meeting on for this one, in case anybody wanted to revisit items. There would be an opportunity to do so. Item seven, discussion possible action regarding supplemental, supplemental projections on employee benefits, four-ten, one, uh, forty-twenty and stuff insurance, forty-thirty. We already handled this last time, just included this in case something came up and there was an an error in a number or something that we needed to, but is there anything that we need to readdress on that? Good, so no action needed on item seven. Item eight, discussion impossible action regarding employer rates uh for health insurance premiums for F Y twenty-five, twenty-six. Does anybody want to revisit those? Not, no action needed on eight. Item nine is also related to the employer rates. There's no discussion, no action on nine. Item ten, discussion possible action regarding a recommendation to address a retroactive employer rate increase of three point six percent effective July one, twenty twenty-five, impacting first quarter payroll for F Y twenty-five, twenty-six. This was from the county clerk's finance department. On this one, we just want to make sure that the departments are, have the funds in their budget to count for three point six.
That would be the one.
Yeah.
Well, I think the issue we ran through last year was that those adjustments weren't made until late of fiscal year. So, you know, pretty close when it was approved, the retro branch, and I think one department, by the time they came. Pretty close when it was approved the retro branch. And I think one department, by the time they came around, did the special revenue transfers with the testing. But.
Weren't we, weren't we making the recommendation to take that three point six percent that was associated with the general fund accounts? And just doing like the clerk's office did the beginning of the of the year, July one, and transfer that. Strict to benefit. So it would not need to be associated with anybody's budget.
Well, cash accounts, right?
I think we read your comment. Special revenues.
Well, that would happen monthly.
Right, yeah, right. And that's, yeah, and we don't really.
Well, so after they went from three point six, the retro amount for three months wasn't taken. And I think a special revenue funding happened at towards the end of the year when the clerk's office went to give them retro three point six.
Uh, how would we take, how would we?
Do that? I mean. Um, from this board, you know, because I mean, I see what you're saying, John. I mean. So because I imagine this will take effect for, let's take effect for the September check. If this all goes through.
What date is budget board?
The sixteen thing, eighteen. So if it's all, if it's October, then I have to rent their.
It's not October last year. I really would be excited for that.
Is it? Is there a way that you guys can send out something that says? Take your appropriate transfers or?
Absolutely.
So however, was there more than one department last year or just one?
I can't recall that looking down. So then all we're talking about here is cash. Yeah, special revenues.
Which everybody that has a special revenue needs to.
They do, but.
And make the monthly creation into fringe if that's where. They need money.
Yeah, that's right. There's something we can do as a board here. I just slide it up. She had to somebody who ever could shoot out an email saying, hey, this is what was approved by a budget board, assuming that happens.
Right, yeah. That's kind of what I was getting at. This is not really something that that this group traditionally weighs in on. Something related to cash accounts.
And it probably doesn't affect like the eight here, but probably some of the other departments that may not have. That may not be aware of the increase.
Okay, so. Some of the other pass-throughs like the public defender's office, the. Who else is on there? Law library, um, those those accounts. Uh, will you guys, did clerk's office, are you guys gonna send out notification? To. To everybody, a little note?
Yes, I think. It's the same, the communication will be same.
Okay. Okay, then.
And so hold on for for highway cash, for example. If we're looking at retroing. Something for three months, then you guys are gonna make sure that if I had an employee July, there's still any care in September. If they leave after two months, then you shouldn't pull three months worth of whatever that number is out. So you you'll review all the. The enrollees to make sure that.
So it would be working with each department to make sure that those funds are available prior to pulling. Amount, I think is what we're talking about.
Well, we're talking about what the increase is passed on to me in in highway cash, right? Thirty employees, it's gonna be three thousand dollars. So some of us budget our highway cash pretty close. So when our monthly appropriations, then they may need to increase by that amount to cover that retro. So you'll help us to identify what that action dollar amount is. So we're not paying for employees that. Although John would like it. Right, okay, alright.
Yeah, tax collars were actually.
Perfect.
Kind of go back to the sign. I mean, is there a way in the future? It's probably not, but is there a way in the future to try to identify? Or can the reason I mean, like, for example, like all of our I C R contracts have already been approved before this will your start date, because that's seems to be what's prudent, you know? Or we have, we have a lot of, and so those that are a hundred percent covered by the schools are now not covered technically a hundred percent. Um, or, you know, some of the other contracts we have that act as a pass through. Or P D A debt people. We sent those over and well, brought a business over there. So we're sending those over as exact numbers. And you know, now that. This has happened and we and we, there's no way for us. I mean, I guess we go back and amend all those contracts.
I I think what we can do moving forward is if we're gonna take the approach that we took this year, which was we asked John what the average. Increase was, and he said three point six percent. So we did the three point six percent increase on the employer portion for this fiscal year. So when we're having conversations about FY twenty six, twenty seven budgets that will go into effect July one, so next. April ish, um, we can find out from John what that average is and just go ahead and bake that average in. On the estimate of needs for the employer. Increase. And then if if it's different later than the, well, we would just capture any change that next fiscal year. So I I think we could do that. And that's a great catch. And we probably should do that next year so that we're able to capture those dollars on the front end. So we're not having to redo contracts.
It's always easier just to make it an expense. If we don't make the change, you can always build less.
Well, and that gets back to what we were talking about before about employees knowing, hey, our rates are gonna go up three percent, three and a half percent, five percent, ten, whatever the. The amount is, two percent is gonna go up this amount every year. And then same thing with the employer premiums. We can budget on that. And then if we have bad years and we need to start supplementing, we can always make transfers and. Make some adjut- some additional adjustments if needed, but just on a regular, ongoing, year-to-year basis. We can count on this is what the increase is both to the employer and to the employee.
So John, when you gave us these numbers, the five fifty, five hundred fifty six thousand for general fund and hundred seventy, those are annualized, right?
Yes. And that's based on current law as of this one.
Okay, it sounds like we have no action needed on item ten. There's not any further discussion. We'll move on to item eleven. Uh, this is the item that we will use to make a recommendation to Oklahoma County Budget Board. Uh, from BET regarding FY twenty five twenty six supplemental appropriations. So. Go, go.
Um, do you mind going back to our budget worksheet where we put the little thing at the bottom?
Yes, we do.
No. Yeah.
He's loaded up just a hair.
Yeah.
Asking for a rank.
By here, he means by at least six percent.
So we did just vote to do the sixty two, two fifty, the eighty three.
Oh, I need to do the eighty three because that's what we'll have going forward next year, in my opinion. So we're gonna annualize that. If you if you don't mind, let me talk through this in my head. I I feel like we need to leave the eighty three thousand up there just because. Let's pretend for a second that we get the exact same amount of revenue for next fiscal year. We at least know we would have that.
I'm listening.
No, no.
But I'm listening.
So, I mean, is am I tracking on that? I. Guess what I'm saying is that if we only did the sixty two, two fifty there, we would need to remember in our head that we're short nineteen thousand bucks and change. And I I don't want to do that to the court clerk if. For us to have to retalk about that. I I don't know, maybe I'm.
No, I see what you're saying.
I just, I mean. Uh, I I wouldn't be so weird about it. It's just that we're so, we're running the same potentially down to zero, depending on how a color vote goes.
I see what you're saying. We voted on so much out of reserve, and if you vote on this, you're kind of funding more of it.
Correct.
So we gotta do one of the others.
Okay. Yeah, I'm I'm obviously, whatever the goal of the group is, I just.
Just not vote.
Yeah. Yeah, I I think whether we do it now or in the future, I think it would be good, especially when we're talking about one-offs like this. We're not talking about. You know, fifteen employees or something like that. I think from a. Tracking purpose, it would probably be beneficial to transfer the full annualized amount and let it lapse back fifteen thousand dollars. But that way, we already know going into next year, it's annualized. We're not having to try to remember, oh, did we annualize that? We didn't. Need to add the extra money for the next year. I think we should consider that. Maybe not this time, but moving forward, because that's gotten us into issues in the past where we've given. Non-annualized amounts into budgets. And then it getting missed that it wasn't annualized in the year and then it winds up high enough. So. Nice. I mean, Christie, what do you, I mean, what would be, you're the, I consider you the expert in that area around the table, so.
I just know we're tight. I just know we were tight. We're depending on what we do.
Yeah.
I mean, I see you have pretty good records in your area.
I'm not worried about the difference between the sixty two and the eighty three annualizing it next year.
Okay.
Fifteen thousand. We will have some growth. But I I understand your point, like pretending like next year we don't get a dollar more.
Well, I mean, then maybe what we do is, because maybe we do take that, I guess, I said nineteen and change. It's actually twenty thousand seven, twenty thousand seven fifty. So let's say we, I mean, maybe we put that on. I I get I did like you, I just don't want it to get missed. And then, because I mean, we're gonna immediately know next year that at a minimum, the court clerk's budget has to go up by twenty thousand seven fifty. Over and above what the supplement was this year, starting July one. So I just don't, I don't know the best way to tackle that going forward without having to remember a whole bunch of stuff.
We've talked about either adding a section on the watch list or having a separate document that tracks those. So if we don't fully fund it. Annualized, I do think we need to add something on the watch list or have a separate document that says. FY twenty six, twenty seven, need to increase court clerk's budget by twenty thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for annualized. Uh, courtroom clerk position added mid-year.
On the on the bottom, all this to all areas where we do fund it, you just put that in a note to the side? Maybe or something, maybe not.
We won't lose it.
Shouldn't be talking about twenty thousand dollars.
That's fine. If we're gonna do that, then we can lower it. I don't know if we want to do it on the watch list because it was already there or make it part of the September recommendation.
I think it would be fewer moving parts if we just did it out of supplement.
Let's do that.
So.
Then we can lower the eighty three and I'll remove it from the watch list.
Okay.
So he needs to change it to sixty two, 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 two fifty?
Yes.
If we're doing it as a supplement, then do we need to go back and change our, I was gonna.
As we go through these conversations, well, now we can do it in. In this and then we can go back and do.
Well, at some point, yeah, we. It's kind of like, we don't want the minutes to be confusing.
Right.
And where I was going this earlier when we started the meeting was be, remember the first day that we met, we did the three point six. And then the second day, we came back and we actually have the dollar amounts. When you look at our minutes from the last meeting, there's two item thirteens. So if. No one remembers what that is. So.
Okay, so let's go ahead. What we're what we're talking about, is there a motion to um. To clarify from earlier that the sixty two thousand two hundred and fifty dollar recommendation will be um, for the court clerk's additional courtroom employee. Will be. Included in our September supplement recommendation and not a transfer from reserve.
Yes.
Alright, we got a motion. Do we have a second? We got a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Yeah, so that didn't change anything, just mechanically it changed.
So if I remember right, then as far as this little list, we did vote on the elected salary. We did a separate vote there. We did the general fund premium vote. County audit has to be done, like that statutory.
We voted on it.
Yeah.
We just did the sixty two. So I think the fifty five was placeholder, just to get it on this list. So we have that. And then we have, um, I think the ARBIT interest was a placeholder. I don't know.
No, I think it was because the ARBIT interest was part of the supplement and it needs to.
I know, but I.
Go up to the one time and.
But we didn't make it.
No, no, we didn't. I think that was just so we remembered that seven fifty is associated with one time. Monies are not ongoing.
Well, for formality, I'll make the motion that seven hundred and fifty thousand does get put on the watch list on the one time.
Is that the, is that where needs to go as a watch list or the reserve or?
It's one time money. We're not spending it right now.
Well, I I think.
Unless we're about to come up with something to spend one time money on.
You're you're not referencing adding it as a watch this item. You're just talking about putting it in the balance.
Putting it into the balance. Yeah, we just go into the balance.
Okay, I'm second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to include the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of ARBIT interest revenue that's included in the supplemental appropriation. Into what we are tracking as one time reserve dollars. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. So we have left the fifty five thousand and the. The pay. And if I heard Brandon right, you'd rather us pick up the pay first, right?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah. And that fifty five, again, I that was that was on, that was quoted on a hundred and thirty five people. We don't have that many now. We've got a hundred and five-ish or so. And so I mean, it worked. I mean, I don't know how those licenses work. I'm looking at one for one, but.
I think they are.
Huh?
I think they are.
Well, in that case, we're gonna equip numbers on the. We can change that to forty two, seven, seven, seven. Let's go forty three thousand. Richard, that's it. I mean, again, if that's how it actually is, I'm not, Dane got that close, so I'm not sure how those things are quoted.
That's up to you. You want me to do that?
Yeah.
Unless I miss something, I don't see a reason to have extra license to do stuff on there. We're not gonna use them.
Albert, next to that, can you put no rec yet?
Yeah.
Is everything else we've got recommendations?
Okay. So what were our numbers again? All of it is at least one point four eight four, one point five two at the end. Okay.
I went, the calculations. Does anybody else have those numbers?
The three percent is, uh, three percent and that is retro back. One point four six eight.
And yes, that like, nine month. Numbers.
Say that again.
Your nine month, okay. Or one five, one center, under each of those columns as well.
Hey, Cody. I haven't been here in a while, so bear with me for a second, but in the past, my recollection is when departments had submitted an estimate needs with numbers or raises, those had been stripped out.
Yes.
Okay. This year, if my recollection is right, because we were able to fund everyone at their request, there there are certain departments that had raised money already in there. For instance, we had three percent at this DARM on me this morning. So we, we probably need to take a look at that.
See if anybody else already included it?
Yes.
Because if we use back.
And those.
Dollars out.
Back those dollars in, if that in fact is correct.
More homework.
Well.
No, it's good. What you're saying is good.
Yes, I mean, it is more homework, but.
Well, all we, all we need to do is go back and look at the estimate of needs that were funded, that were fully funded and see if there was a an amount in there for a salary adjustment, whether it was three percent, some may have done two and a half percent.
We could have a conversation regarding equalizing, what's that number that we're looking at, right? I think Brandon had said he was in favor of three point five. Remembering that right, Brandon? Or Cody, it was you or something, talking about three point five and ultimately if that was the decision of the group, this one got three percent. Then we would need a half. And keep in mind, my, my three percent isn't fully annualized because of the way we do our budget. You know, you recall, we were able to have some flexibility to help out the general fund by putting certain salaries into highway cash for a, a period of time within the year. But I assume there might be other budgets that are that way. But, you know, Christie had expressed a concern about trying to keep a, a balance that was a million or so. I mean, some balance, not zero. And so if, if we do take a look at that, then theoretically, you think that reserve number, we're not pulling as much from reserve to do selling.
If we've already, yeah, like in your case, if we've already funded some for raises, that would.
Right. But we need to verify that and we, in fact, get those funds, if they were baked into somebody's budget as approved, the request as approved, but.
Do we know around the table, do we kind of know for each, like you know and I know, we did, we don't have any in our general fund.
Well, Albert, you've got the estimate of needs, don't you?
Uh, which one you want to look at first, general fund?
Yeah, general fund's all we need to look at.
Like this is your, uh, county commissioners, estimate of needs. I need to make it bigger.
Because you want me to read it?
What are we looking for specifically? Do you mean?
I think that's our adjustment is for the elected.
Fire stuff.
Right. So it looks like that does not have.
Where was your, where was your three percent plugged in?
On the, on the, Albert, you want to do the words?
Yes. Well, that has the merit.
From last year's.
Yeah.
Oh, maybe, yeah, because I looked through ours and I didn't see what you might be talking about or.
Yeah, FY twenty-five, twenty-six.
Okay, and on the salary adjustments for commissioners, that's seventy-one, seventy-five, whatever that was, to true everything up from before. So that wasn't a, that wasn't associated with a cola or, or anything there. But, but the commissioners, it doesn't really matter because we're not looking at a cola on theirs because we've already addressed the salaries for them. Well, is Jessica funded out of that? So we need to look at it from that aspect.
So we got that in our salary, correct? So I got that in, I got that three percent increase in my current year budget, so I can, I can handle.
So we just saved nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. A huge district fund plus the benefit.
If that, if that turns out to be.
Albert, can we look at another one?
But I think, I think, I think we make that three percent as the base, right?
Albert, can we go to another? Just go down in order so we don't miss any.
Ours was not a general percentage, the obvious salary adjustment. Not a general percentage increase for all.
That looked like there's a cola there. Okay. Yeah, I think these were adjustments to salaries, not a cola. There won't be any there. No cola there. No. Did we increase salaries by eight point one million? No, we increased by two ten, sorry.
I was like, we should go down a roll.
Yeah.
You make it like a smaller one or.
See where the document.
Show the left, will you, for the left? Well, after they top that judicial expansion, so that, that was two additional positions, well, so they put three in?
Yes.
All right, this is side rabbit, yeah.
Well, that does have two and a half percent. Well, what is that?
That's just the last year.
Last year. Were, were those increases or cola? On, on this document, do you know?
Yeah, it was annualized.
Okay. Okay, next, yeah.
That was for that, uh, purchasing where we didn't get the funds previous.
Okay.
And.
Okay, next.
District attorneys doesn't have any of that, does it?
No.
Public defender?
No.
Election board?
Yeah.
What is, general fund, oh, wait, mine is. Yeah, these weren't colas, these were adjusting. Salaries based upon them looking at other entities. Good?
Yep.
Yeah, that one. No, this one. These weren't colas.
Yeah, they're just some shuffle around and.
Yeah, this was just moving people around because of the change. Reduction.
Okay.
A free pair?
Yeah.
Yeah, it won't have it.
They probably just.
I'll pull that up. And that's it, back to the ship.
Okay, I mean, I'm looking at all those, I mean, there's several that have had salary adjustments in there. I mean, district one actually labeled there as cola and they're all labeled whatever. So.
Merit.
Or merit, I, I would say just do a cross. I mean, just because they may have labeled it one way, I mean, everybody put their stuff in there and there's lots of them that had changes, so this is my thought. So, Albert, can you go back to that document that shows the, the various salary changes?
This one?
Yep. All right, so we got, it is basically, what was it, one point five two seven million to work with and those are the, the cola percentages, so, yeah, one point five two seven.
And I said, you have your nine month.
Next, you have your nine month.
Yeah. All right, is there any discussion, any motions?
Um, I got with Butch and he wanted to look at the three percent for twelve months. But when the four sixty eight, six, seven, one.
Was that a motion to recommend?
I mean, I can make an emotion, see where we're at.
Well, I asked if it was a motion because we had to say.
I didn't know if we were going to discuss.
I mean, I, I, again, I just want to make sure, if we're talking about last meeting, I just want to make sure that functionally zeroing or nearly zeroing the one time portion of.
Ongoing.
Yeah.
Ongoing.
You know, I'm, I'm, based on our discussions, I feel like I'm pretty confident that the majority of stuff that gets paid out of reserve is, is one time emergency stuff, but.
Yeah, like I said last time, I can't recall something that was a, we have no choice, we have to do this, that was an ongoing expense. I mean, we just don't, I mean, to, I mean, the, the court clerk's position, I mean, it was recommended and funded, but that didn't absolutely have to happen. If that came up mid-year, we could always say, we just don't have the money for it. It's not something that, I, I, I get you guys need it, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do it, but I'm just saying that it's not a, it's not like an elevator that has water standing, you know, three quarters of the way up and we have to, you know, we have to get some funding over for that. Generally speaking, all of the, the items that are of emergent nature that we really don't have a choice, it's just you, you gotta do it, are of a one-time nature. All the others, while very, very valid and very, very needed, I mean, choices can be made.
In the past, on these, had, had we tied it to link the service?
No.
Position, okay.
I don't know, we would want, I mean, we would love to do the merit, but I'm concerned with the balance on our general reserve getting so low.
How much is in reserve? So, or, let's say just you, what, seven point seven five million?
Well, as a, they're eight point one.
Okay, can you, can you take that three percent retroed? And subtract that from that eight point one?
There's not enough ongoing in there.
Right. But I just want to see what this number looks like.
There's not enough.
Yeah, there's, there's enough ongoing. We've got one point five two seven.
Right, with the supplement, you're, you're just going off the sheet that's, the stuff that's in reserve.
There's only a billion ongoing, something like that.
Need to look back at the other sheet.
Currently, yeah.
Um, the one that has.
A work sheet.
Budget work sheet, yeah.
Sorry about this number here.
Yeah, okay.
That includes a million sixty one thousand. Yeah, fifty eight thousand.
Well, and then, and then plus the, the other portion of reserve dollars.
Oh, the eight point one?
Yeah. Or whatever the, whatever the amount is.
I think we need to keep it separate.
Kristi, I think, I think what, well, I mean, we can keep it separate, but just so we know what is.
For right here.
Yeah. Yeah, but in a separate column, would, we have fifty eight thousand four seventy nine twenty left in ongoing. How much do we have in one time? Seven point eight million, something?
Seven million ninety one thousand forty seven dollars.
Plus the seven seven five.
Plus seven fifty.
Seven seven.
Ready?
Yes.
Uh, seven million ninety one thousand forty seven dollars. Plus seven hundred fifty.
Okay, so what we have that can tackle emergencies is seven point eight million dollars and fifty eight thousand dollars. And I mean, I know we're, we track the one-time expenses versus the ongoing expenses separately. But if we got into a situation like the court clerk's position, that one-time money funds nine years of that salary. If, if that came up this year and it's like, well, we want to do that, I mean, you just have to keep in mind that those aren't additional dollars coming each year, but we'll have, if history repeats itself, three, three and a half, four percent increase each year to cover, you know, extra ongoing expenses, but we'll have over seven point nine million dollars in reserve to start the year. If you include a three percent cola slash merit, whatever the nomenclature is, retro back, there will be seven million eight hundred ninety nine thousand five hundred and twenty six dollars and twenty cents in emergency funding available.
In our last meeting, didn't we somewhat talk about, I know we can't hear Mark or can't future expenses, we talked about pulling a million allocation annually for the next seven years. The somewhat jumpstart of that.
Yeah.
Reserve, at least a million dollars every year for the next seven years, that's somewhat, yeah. But I know we can't tie that annually, but that would be something, I think, my elected official said that he would like to see something in that, if you're just so that it's tabbed to your mark for future use.
So when we're going through the fiscal year and we bring one-time expenses or whatever supplemental appropriations, we're trying to limit ourselves to that million dollars.
Right.
Each fiscal year, and if we're going to go over that million dollars, we will know that we're going over that million dollars and it's going to need to be something really, 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 really.
I want to ask a question on the revenue sheet, as you're like, Kristi, can you help me? On the, on the revenue sheet, last year, when we're looking at interest income, the amended budget was two million and the actual revenue was five million. See where it says, and we're only estimating one one seven five?
I'd have to go back and look at what Mark and Stacy calculated, they do that. I know that BUDs were going to cut rates and then I know the ARBA was down.
Been down.
Well, yeah, but the, those are just separate line items. I understand the ARBA, but I, I'm just curious.
I can definitely go take a look at it.
We way outperformed the projection last year.
Okay, so you're talking about the line item that does not include.
Correct.
And can you repeat those numbers?
Yeah, so.
Here, I'll pull it up.
Oh, thanks, Albert, that makes it easier.
I didn't load it up?
Yes, please.
Forty four?
Yeah, forty four.
And if I, if I remember right, it's like Kristi said, Mark was being conservative with the Fed rates. And why you did one point seven there?
Right, I understand.
Some of that's attributed to when you put, we had like fourteen point eight extra when we started the year last year.
Okay.
It really didn't get used, so, I mean, I don't mind.
I mean, I, yeah.
What can Stacy?
I was going to see what last, and what's going to get an idea.
Your supplement.
Yeah, two, at three and a half, and then we had three points, and then, and then it's about a two million.
I can definitely have a look at it.
Well, I mean, now's the time.
I know.
I mean, if we think there's potential for.
We got one.
For more revenue sitting out there, we need to capture it now or what I'd look next year. Kristi, how, how long do you think that would take, take a look at that?
Um, I don't think it'll take long, I think Stacy's here.
Are we wanting to let them take a look at that and recess for a few minutes?
If there's potentially revenue out there that we're not capturing, that really changes the conversation surrounding what reserve looks like.
Yeah, absolutely.
You on a break?
Yeah, do we want to recess until three thirty? Like, you have seventeen minutes? Is that enough time to, to just find out whether she can get a number today? Or, I mean, if we want to recess until tomorrow or Thursday, maybe we can do that as well, it's up to you guys.
I'm sure she would prefer more time, but.
Let's give her time so she can, yeah, don't rush her.
There's a special DFCC at ten.
Ten fifteen, no.
That's on. Yeah, she was asking about Thursday morning. Yeah. Kristi, what do you think as far as time? You would.
I think rather, rather than coming back today.
Yeah.
So whatever works with everyone's schedule.
I think it's Thursday.
We can always do this, if we pick up, unless there's some, someone else wants to un, what we pick up can just end up in the reserve. But we've got it captured to use. We're about one thirty tomorrow, or same time.
I, I'm available. I'm, so, okay, so let me, let me just make sure, so what we're trying to do is if there's additional revenue, we would need to capture it before budget war on Thursday, right? So, does appropriately to ask this, but, I mean, does the additional revenue change anyone's opinion on the vote for cola? Because like Kristi said, if we even, because even.
It depends on how much it would be. I mean, if we're talking, it just depends on how much it would be, yeah.
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is that if we've I think there's seven point nine million dollars in reserve.
Right. So, will you guys be back from Coda on Monday? I'd rather everybody be available.
Got excess board at nine forty.
Yeah.
Wide open Monday.
Do we want to, do we want to look at ten thirty on Monday?
Can make it work.
All right, I work for you guys.
Kristi, you may. On the ARBA. Our burn rate on those.
Well, she reached out to.
Oh, she did, okay.
Yeah, yeah, she reached out, tried to get a. Nobody really knows how bad. Oh, no, it's all, I think, twenty six.
Right. Okay, so is there any other business that anybody would like to tackle that's on the agenda today? If not, it sounds like we're going to recess, so we can always, I mean, get back up with every single item upon here on Monday. Things will need to, but, I mean, but there is the opportunity to, is there any citizens participation? Paying board comments, Sister Two?
No.
Or, Sister Three? Sister One? Other than thank you to Kristi and Stacy and Albert.
Thanks for driving.
For me, thanks everyone. Is there any new business? Say none, is there a motion to recess until ten thirty? I guess that would be September fifteen. At ten thirty in this room? We got a motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Okay.
Any opposed? We're recessed. Thanks everyone.